In Book of Joshua, we can see how Joshua started his ministry with a promise. How he initiated. There shall not be anyone able to stand before thee all the days of thy life. But when they defeated over this city. When they prevailed, they could not do further. And it is a very simple war, but they got a good beatings. And Joshua found in the presence of the Lord. And it was said that no man shall stand before thee, but everyone is standing before him continuously. And Lord said to him. And the curse of things are found among you, so you are defeated. The curse of thing if it is found among you and you will be failed in your ministry. We must understand and this in a proper way. And we can see in the book of Joshua, chapter seven verse eleven. And that which is cursed is among you and you will be defeated. May the God's holy name be glorified. I tell you some of the reasons for the curses. Firstly. When we look at the book of Genesis, chapter four verse eleven. And listen properly or by heart yourself. I was told to tell this, so I said before. Entering into two thousand eighteen with the same curses if you are entangled and if you are not prospered, if you don't receive the blessings and what is the use of it? So first of all, and the thing they needed to us is that all the bindings of the curses must be removed. And according to Genesis, chapter four verse eleven, the Lord said to Cain, and now thou art a cursed from the earth. What was the curse? And you have killed your brother. And your brother's blood was shed. Your offering was so lovely when you come offering. From this word we understand. And what is the lesson? And he who cursed, hate his brother is a cursed one. The one who is thirsty remains that one is a cursed. If there are among your brother or sister, if there is hatred and then it is a curse. Even today some ask me through phone. How could I ask forgiveness? It is not living away from my mind, it is staying in my mind. You call them and ask forgiveness. Or go in person and ask for forgiveness. And what explanation they give about to you or if they, if they cancel the phone or even if they are giving some scoldings, you must receive it. And you must cleanse your conscience in the presence of the God. And Adam and Eve, they did not curse a king, but the Lord himself cursed him that you will be the fugitive and vagabond in the earth. And the Lord came to this world to command the peace. And my peace I leave unto you, he said. We came to this religion of way to be changed like Jesus. We did not come to this earth to achieve something. If you close your eyes, you should be in peace with everyone. Your enemy must say he is a good one. Even in your funeral, on your death, he must still, he must witness about you. My mother one day spoke to me. And she complained that a daughter-in-law brother had did something to me. And we used to see them only ten minutes, but she lamented to me a little. And for me, there are four children to her. Two brothers and two sisters. I said immediately. After your death, if your son-in-law and daughter-in-law, they witness or testify, give testimony, it is true that you will go to heaven or it is not true. And she asked me why you speak suddenly. And I used to speak in this way. Even my mother or father, I will give it through the word of God and if the son-in-law or daughter-in-law give testimony about you, it is true that you receive the confirmation letter. This ministry is a ministry of reconciliation. This doctrine is the doctrine of reconciliation. And that is very important. If you do not do this work and if you do some of the work and we will not be recognized. Secondly. When we look on to book of Genesis, chapter nine verse twenty-five. And what it is mentioned there. And canon is a cursed. And there were three sons for Nova. And same come and shepherd. And among these three children. And they came out of the ark of the Nova. One day Noah began to have drank wine and he was drunken. What happened there? And his uncovered, he was sneaking his garments. And his knowledge did not instinct it to him. Suddenly again entered the place. And Ham the canon entered the place. What happened there? And his father nakedness was shown there. If the clothes of garments are departed, what will you do? If they were the wrong garments, what will we tell and we will give a signal to them. And what they did, you know? And he could have covered or he would have done something to the garments. But what he did? He straight away went towards and he called the other two. And see how he was. And it was so shameful. And is he a father? And he made such a dialogue and he went that place. And what the shame and Japheth did? And they covered the nakedness of the father when they went backwards and they covered the nakedness of the father and they even went away from the place. In every man, there is a nakedness. But you should not reveal it out. If any wrong or any mistake is found before them, if you tell it out, then it is a sin. You must cover the nakedness. And how can you tell about the nakedness of your brother? How can you tell the nakedness of your father? And how can you tell about the mistakes or blunder of your father, your family members and the church and believers? In some, in particular place, a husband committed a mistake. But it was not known to anyone. It was known to her wife. And what he did? And she informed everyone and brought him to this allegation. And next day, the people gathered and they punished him. It was known to the church. And then after the church also punished him. And next the communion came. And communion was not given to him. And wife take, came to take communion. And sent a pastor came there. A particular person, we stopped him not to take the communion. We asked reason. And this is the reason. And who made this problem? And so there is no communion for her wife. She did not cover the nakedness of his husband and she could have covered the mistake or blunders and kept in the presence of the Lord and she was the one despised in the name of the Lord. Till now, the land of the canon was cursed and all the peoples or inhabitants of the canon were burnt out and the people of Israelites were landed there. Thirdly. When we look on to book of Genesis, chapter forty-nine verse seven. And exceeding wrath of fury is cursed. We can see the believers or the servants of God getting angry. Your fears must be to a limit. For spiritual life and you can be, get angry. But what does the Bible say? And even if you get angry, you should not commit sin. It is not a great achievement that you are getting angry, but if you commit a sin, then it is a cursed. And what they do in the times of anger. They speak evil words. In the times of anger, they beat others. In times of anger, they are divided. These become a sin and because of that sin, it become a curse. And so James say, and you must be swift to anger. When Jesus said in book of Matthew. And just leave when one gets angered and he is belong to this hellfire. There must be just in your anger, there should not be sin in it. Could you understand? Before the sun goes down and they must clear their anger. And literally when we see before evening, they must go down. And at night eight o'clock, the quarrel started. And what should we do further? And can we wait till the next day five o'clock? It's not like that. And before the sun rises up and the anchor must go down. When it till rightly. And literally the sun rises up before the sun goes down spiritually and your anger must go down. Before the presence of the Lord depart from you, your angerness and fears must go down from you. I told you in the beginning, that which is cursed found among your home and is a cursed. When we look about this in book of Deuteronomy, chapter thirteen verse seventeen. What it was mentioned there? And that which is cursed should not be in your house. And you must check whether there are any cursed things found in your home. And check whether all the things of your home is proper or good. Don't keep anything which is undesirable to God. Things concerning this idolatry should not be in your home. And things, any concern, considering or concerning this fleshly things should not be in your home. And when this time, month came and all used to celebrate bogie festival. What is the meaning of it? They fire up every unnecessary materials or things of the home likewise through the sanctification, you must fire up all the unnecessary matters. Free television was issued to them and so everyone have got the television and kept in every room. See how was they freely entered the home? Anything which is contrary to the will of God and that is cursed is found in your home, you go home and check and analyze. And the Lord will make it proper. If it is in your home, you must remove it. Book of Deuteronomy, chapter twenty-seven. When we look on to sixteenth verse. And they that blaspheme father and mother are crack cursed. You should not curse your father and mother. And we must take the father and mother or give to us. And they may be educated, they may be illiterate, they may be poor, they may be innocent. And whoever may be whatever the owner you must give, you must say to them. And that is the important thing. Our people, they will go around, but they will not look after their parents. All the concern and caring that we must give to our father and mother is our duty. And if you are not nourishing your father and mother, if you eat well and what is the use of it? And they used to tell a story, there is no, there is no food for father and mother, but she, he was still, he was carrying his wife. And he who blaspheme the father and mother are cursed. Have you despised or blasphemed your father and mother, why did you beget me, have you asked such questions to your father and mother? When we look on to book Deuteronomy, chapter twenty-seven verse seventeen. And he who removed his neighbor's landmark are cursed. You should not change the landmark. So the Bible says that you should not change the landmark of the ancient. One feet, half feet and you should not extend and you should not take those places and according to Bible, it is a curse. And he who is a cursed should take away the landmark. When Pastor Wesley speaks. We are not changing the landmark of an ancient, but we still bend the landmarks according to our desire, according to our ability. When we look on to Deuteronomy, chapter twenty-seven verse eighteen. Cursed be that maker the blind to wander out of the way. And he who has cursed and who is despising the damned. Because of the weakness and sickness of the deficiencies of the body, if you curse others and that will turn as a curse to you. And you should pay more attention in this matter. And those were affected and looking onto them, you should not mock at them. And they used to say he is a blind. And they still they his a dad. And they tell his a name. It will be very interesting to speak about these matters, but before God, it is a curse. And you should not speak wild or mean about any person for said any such things. When we look on to Deuteronomy, chapter twenty-seven verse nineteen. Cursed be he that perverted the judgment. Child of God must see the judgment and what is what and they must say, and they is name. You should not bend the judgment. If you pervert the judgment, everything is over. And so it is mentioned that thou shall not commit a false witness. Wherever you perverted the judgment, the Lord will depart from you. Because of fear. And because of desire of a man. And because of hatred towards others. And he must caught up and if you pervert the judgment, everything is over. I used to tell often what Pastor Joel said. I believe, worked in a particular office. And he will not get bribes. But in that office, everyone is in need of a bribe. And they said unto him, you get it or make us to get it. And like a justice, you should not be like this. At last, he did not receive the bribes. So what they did? At last and they made a query that he received the bribes. And he got bribe. And we saw it. And they wrote to their department. And three signed for it. And before the end, when it started, they suspended him. And when they came back and written, they said, and yes, it was true. Not only he was suspended and he entered it to a case. And he was so sin. And because of truth, he was affected. Pastor Joel used to tell when he wake up early in the morning and he will come to the faith home. And looking unto him, I will be tends to be some, do something to his case. At last, it came to inquiry. And it came to hearing, which is a personal inquiry. At a point of time when he came and prayed. And he was the accuser and he was told in the place. And the accuser was stood there. And they asked the opposite him to stand there. And judge read out the three names. And the person who was there and he read out those three and called three names. And no one entered into then inside. And about a liar. And liar came. And he bowed his head and stood there. And he asked what? On the way, and the three met an accident and they were dead. And judges remain silent. He certainly replied that this is the judgment given by the Lord, I don't want to give any further judgment. You should not pervert the judgment. That becomes a great curse. When we look on to Deuteronomy, chapter twenty-seven verse twenty-two, twenty-three, we can see and the unnecessary relationship is a curse. And it is not mentioned about the orderly life. And unnecessary relationship. A believer or sister or brotherly relationship, if we go beyond this limit and we must get this curse. And we must be. Because everyone call as a sister and brother. When you bring some wrong thoughts and intentions in this relationship of sister and brother and that become a curse to you. Staying in the church and you became a cursed. Don't you know this? Don't you know this, all are the children of God? And you must take heed of this matter. When you read about this in the other part of the scripture. When we look on to first Samuel, chapter three verse thirteen. And Eli even he know about that there will curse come upon him and he did not control his child. And what was the curse came upon them? And they played in the faith home. And they kept hands in the ministry. And they had a wrong contact with the baby. After coming to the ministry. After coming to the ministry and if you have a legal contact, I will love this and that and if you go and go and do this marriages and this will become a curse to you. Then why did you come to the church? Did you come to the salvation or did you come to doing some other things or you come to marriage and do corruptible things? And one group of people are rising up in this generation. When we look on to book of Deuteronomy, chapter twenty-seven verse twenty-five. And those were getting the bribes is a cursed. After coming to the spiritual life, may stop getting these bribes. And one particular believer, he was a purchasing manager in a company and he got many monies. But he was not a believer then. But his wife was a believer. So he did not look after him. But he got good, bad meetings to him. He got many amounts. He earned more income and he got house upon house. At that time, he come, came to the faith. What he would should have done? After coming to the salvation, he could have given the money back or he could have done something. A company is going to catch him. And the next morning, the company is going to take action upon him before the evening, I given a resignation letter. And the business parties and have supported him. And they made that resign letter as a VRS. Pension for pension and VRS for VRS and all the money got as a bribe and it is, it came to him. But you know what happened there? Then after he could not get the job further. And all the possessions and houses were there for him. I don't want to tell. Even if they hear and they may feel difficulty. But you know what happened? All the possessions were set to him. He got the pension amount and all the settlement and he received all the money. He was jobless, stayed at home and all this wife and children, they were against him. And his boy was got up. And with that boy and this mother resisted him. She motivated his child and his father is not proper at last, they were against him, he was dead. He came at last, made his mother to go on the streets by telling all the possessions belong to me. See how the possessions go. And the days were passed. He did not give any amount to his sisters, at last made his mother to go about and all the possessions belong to him. And he went to the party. He got a lot of money. He was entangled, many problems. At last, there is a quarrel among the family. And he bit some particular person in a house and he was dead there. And recently, there was a problem among the street and he killed them and he was in jail. And he was the one who was. When he was there in my church and he learned Sunday school. The root of the money is stolen. You must take heed. And bribes. And the soldiers ask unto Jesus, and your income is sufficient for thee. In the gospel to Saint Luke, Jesus said beautifully. And now the sales just came to him. And master, what we must do? And book of Luke, chapter three, verse fourteen. And don't do any violence to others. And never accuse any false. And be content with your wages. And he who received the bribes is a cursed. When we look on to book of Deuteronomy, chapter twenty seven, verse twenty six. And not only here, the word of God, and he was not following according the word of God. And words are not only mentioned to be heard, to hear, it is to follow. How we are in our life. And those who hold for the word of God are blessed. And cursed is the one who confirms not the word of God. When we look on to book of Joshua, chapter nine, verse twenty three. When Joshua traveled to the- And give units came there. And what they did? And they lied at him, that saying that and all the food items were rotten because we have done, on the way, we have traveled for a long distance. And what happened there? And he said that you have deceived me and you are cursed. You should not deceive others. Do not deceive your prior parents. And don't get any wrong mixed signature in this. And don't deceive the Gentiles. And don't deceive the one or a pathetic. And don't deceive those who are illiterate. Don't deceive one who believe with you. When we look on to book of Judges, chapter five, verse twenty three. And those who stand not against the side of the Lord and they are cursed. Whatever comes and you must stand in the side of the Lord. And in one place, and Moses asked, and who will stand by the side of the Lord? And Levi stand in the side of the Lord. And those that are stand not in the side of the Lord are cursed. When we look on to book of Second Kings, chapter nine, verse thirty four. And about Jezebel, it is mentioned that you take this cursed woman. Who says? And this Jezebel is a cursed woman. Why? And she is so tough. And she is a great disease. And Jezebel's work is that somehow she had to adorn herself, painted her face and tied her head, and she want to do something to her. And that's what the Bible say, I did not say this. And she painted her eyes and painted her face and tied her head and looked out of the window. What was her age? And husband was dead and no more children, and in this age, did she want this kind of adornment? In one particular house, there was a quarrel. And asked the reason. And they did not give ten rupees. And she asked only ten rupees. And if she asked with goodness, I had have given. And what this wrong she committed in ten rupees. She go to a beauty parlor to shape her eyebrows, and our children is so terrible. And this is one of the treachery for the Pentecostal people, one group is like this. A spirit of Jezebel. It means that she is without chastity. And the Bible dictionary gives the meaning, Jezebel is without chastity. Always is in the decoration. Even when they come to the church and they comes like one who go for the fashion show and catwalk. Recently, Pastor Beatt at Switzerland and he was entered into glory. And no one should come inside the prayer hall to Switzerland and be coming in jeans, pants. Even very strict. And there is quality, no quantity, but here, the people are more, but no quality. We look on to the group and crowd, when we are not looking into the quality. And Jezebel is a cursed. When we look on to book of Judges, chapter seventeen, verse two. And one day, the woman stood at the Lord's place, a street and she cursed him. Reason is. Because a thousand hundred silver coins were missed at home. She could not do anything. And she shouted at last cursed by putting up this sand. And all the people at the streets asked him. And nearby, his son asked the matter. And for him is, and how cursed mother have given. And he said, I was stolen that money and hearing curses, I was so afraid of it. And some- And stealing is the one which is a cursed. And before, when I was at Arakonam. And one boy stole money in brother's room. And they caught him. During Bible study time, he entered into brother's room. And they caught him. They caught him and beat him. And he cried and replied unto them, and my father paid my many tithes, and why did you beat me? And he said, when new disciples are coming forth and when the father is paying the tithes and they steal the money and take the money from the offering box. Think and see. And he said that you are so clear in the curse that you have given to me. And after he restored the money and hearing this and he said. And if your son is stealing and it is not a curse, it will be blessing. It is wrong. And stealing is the accusation or it is a curse. When we look on to forty eight, ten of Jeremiah. And he who do the work of the Lord slackness is a cursed. And you should not do the work of the Lord as a work and must do as a ministry. When you tell about the work of the Lord and that is the important work. When you come to do the work of the Lord and you must lay everything aside. If it is a work of the Lord, you must give the first preference to the Lord. One boy gave a beautiful testimony, he was still in ministry. And he was made a research, worked as a scientist in America. And Lord called him. Already, he studied through sponsors. And the scientific scientist team, and they have spent the lakhs and lakhs of amount to make him to learn. He went to H O D and said. Are you clear? Is I am clear? And don't worry about his sponsorship and if you want to serve the Lord, you can do. And they are giving more importance for the work of the Lord and if our people are given one fifty wages, they think and they comfort to come to the service. When we look on to Malachi, chapter one, verse fourteen. And he who is taking as a cursed, be disease, taking as a sacrifice. What does it mean? That which was torn or lame or sick and they leave in the faith home. What the Bible say, you must offer a good offerings. We say that if a child is going under some sicknesses or going in a death bed and we say, if you bring my child alive, I will give him to ministry. And so, and what the Lord is doing, one who is so superb in the family and Lord is taking them. See how you are appointed for the Lord. Old table. And there's broken locks of wood. How you give to the Lord? And cursed is the one who was taking that which was corrupted. And Malachi, chapter two, verse two. And he who bring out not the glory to the Lord is cursed. You must give glory unto the name of the Lord and not to the man. Cursed is the one give not the glory to the Lord. When we look on to book of Proverbs, chapter twenty eight, verse twenty seven. And he who refrain his eyes to the poor is cursed. If you do not look unto the poor, the curses will come upon you. How we are today. What do we understand from this? When you help not the poor, the curses will fall upon you. How is this present state? And this is the time we have to feel our state. When we look on to New Testament. When we look on to First Corinthians, chapter sixteen, verse twenty two. And one who love not the Lord are Jesus Christ and he is a cursed. And you can love your wife and children, your father and mother, one who love more than everyone is Jesus Christ. And you must love the Lord more than everyone. How far you love the Lord to that extent, you will be changes in. How far you love the Lord to that extent, you will get the growth and you will get the blessings and you get the reward. When we look on to book of Mark, chapter eleven, verse twenty one. And that which not give for the fruits are cursed, the Lord cursed that tree. And you are planted in the church. And you are watered by Holy Ghost. You may should have grown, grown in this church. You may be the shadow to this church. It may be useful for the church. If you give fruits, it is useful to the Lord. Let us all close our eyes. Is there any curses on you? I told you some incidents that you could understand. And I told you some of the joking to some, a tricking about. That incident, you must know to you. Knowingly or unknowingly, even a single point found among you and it will come and follow after you. Till this curse is found in you and your progressment will be hindered and your shining will be hindered. That the Lord expected will not prosper in you and that your expectation will not be prospered. For a while, let us all close our eyes and stand on knees. You, the spiritual one, has understand you, and about the twenty two curses found among you in your family or your children or among your houses, or the curses are found in your ministry, or in the places or in your matters. When you compare these verses to others and when you say it is to others, then you are a pharisee. And no Lord, because of some circumstances or some situations and these curses attacked me and by the blood of Jesus Christ on the cross, you must sanctify me. And how many are going to return from this sanctification meeting, being the bindings of your curses being removed? Knowingly or unknowingly. And without your knowledge or without your knowledge. Understanding or without understanding. There are some chances such attacks may be found in you. You may be the servant of God. You may be believers. You may be the spiritual ones. You may be a just. Unknowingly or without our knowledge and we could have cast into such kind of situations. Have you hated your brother? Have you made you others nakedness to others? Because of angry, did you commit a curse? Is there any thing which is undesirable to go from your home? Have you blasphemed your father and mother? Have you changed your landmark? Have you perverted the way of the blind and made her accuse as a thief? Have you perverted the judgment? Have you entangled in the unnecessary relationship? Have you got bribes? And have you the one who was not holding the word of God? Have you deceived others? At the times that you want to stand by the side of the Lord, but you have departed from the place. Have you given room for the worldly adornment like Jezebel? Have you stolen any things of the other people? Have you done the work of the Lord with slackness? Have you offered a sacrifice that which was spoiled? The time that you want to give glory without you have not got given glory to them? Have you done the life without giving group fruits? Have you now love not the love of Jesus Christ? Knowing the curses of your children, did you not bring up your children in a perfect way? Have you refined your eyes to the poor? If you ask forgiveness today. All kinds of twenty two curses. All kinds of twenty two curses will be broken. How many of you believe this? And because of this many curses to your family. And because of this, because you lost your peace. Because of the great pain and tormentation in your life. And many confusions in your family. And it is going through the untranscutable way. Right now, the Lord brought you to attain that curse. The purpose of the sanctification is meeting the all the curses and all the sin from your family and you should be removed. Till now, you may be a cursed to others. But after this meeting, thou shall be a blessing for others. The Lord will love to you and he will make your curses as a blessing. Lord, I feel my curse. Lord, be merciful to me. Open your mouth and confess. When you stand on the knees, all the curses of your life from the head of the to the soul of the feet, it should be removed. When you confess, all the curses in your family and your house should be removed. When you shed tears, all the curses upon your generations and offspring should be removed.
Hallelujah, amen.
I desire that kneeling that you have done down and it must be a permanent deliverance. If possible, you cry. Let you break your heart and we pour our gift of tears. Jesus is sufficient. And Lord is sufficient for me. It is enough that I have cursed been. And hereafter, I must enjoy the blessings. Knowingly or unknowingly, when I hear the word of God, I feel that in some places I have lost these blessings or curse. If it is true that you have cursed upon the cross for the sake of the meat or me, all the curses and it really will. Open your mouth.
You want to.
I don't desire that you have to do artificially or emotionally, you must do truly. And today, let it be a good time for you. Let the curses be removed, depart from this place and Satan will flee away from you. If possible, you are able, you stand on knees, there is does not wrong. Your kneeling will help your and generations. Your kneeling down will help your family. Without deliverance, if you depart from this place, you are deceived. Like Jacob, you strive hard with me. Like a pawn, you stroll with him. I will not leave you. Open your mouth. Let your voice be heard in the heaven. You hold down the cross.
Amen.
And truly, I feel some of the curses are upon me, if so, you stand up and confess. Two minutes. What you realize in your mind and what the spirit of God is realizing you, appeasing you, appealing you and you stand up and confess. When you kneel down and when you are anointing, every curses will be removed.
Amen. Baka da baka thida baka thida. Amen, hallelujah.
And from the second, you must receive the deliverance. You must experience the deliverance. You stand on knees and strive hard with him.
Amen, amen. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Amen, amen. Hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Wallamai devariyurudhe, hallelujah. Amen. Abishagam, abishagam, over step stepa yaranga yaranga, over sabathin kaniyu thirikum.
If an anointing comes step by step and all the sneezes of the curses will be removed. The reason for the curses removed is anointing. At the end of this meeting, thou shall be a blessing. For a while, let us all give room for that anointing.
Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Amen, amen.
Please make your the desatstret of your mind. Don't disturb your mind by saying that my husband is not proper, my children is not proper. Through your anointing, all the curses will be removed. And everywhere will be blessed among you. And through you, all the curses of the people will be thrown out.
Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Thidai, na, Nis, Se, Hantai. Amen. Amen. A, oru, manshanu, de, oru, manshanu, de, ka, kal, kattapadrantha, adha, avuttha, va, ebbri, iruppa, ebbri, feel, panva.
If a man's hands and legs are, loo, loo, banned, how it will feel?
Oru, Sappani, naapadu, oshuma, nada, kada, manshanu, nada.
A cripple, after forty years, who could not walk, he walked.
Avan, nindra, nada, than, kuditha, than, odi, than, avanala, enna, pananu, nand, terila, apodi, oru, Abhishekavallamai.
It's like that, he jump, he leaped over, he run over, he do not know what to do.
On Sabangal, neekapadu, vedada.
Your curses are removed.
Ne, Asirvadamai, iruppa.
And thou shall be a blessing.
Re, Li, She, Kalaniya. Amen. Yaro, yar, vekka, padhadi.
Don't wield shame.
Yara, Avi, adaki, vekyadi.
Don't control your spirit.
An, adhe, narathla, Avila, nerapi, yar, i, edichu, disturb, pannadi.
At the same time, and don't dash each other, and don't disturb them, while they are feeling in spirit.
Adho, vandu, matthangal, kaba, kti, lamo, padu.
And that will not be edification for others.
An, onakul, Yudha, Kottharathu, Singa, vandevita.
But now, the line of Judah has entered into you.
Ne, bayapada.
Do not fear.
Yada, patti, galanga.
Do not be troubled about anything.
Katthar, unodu, rukkara.
The Lord is with you.
Edumbi, pragasi.
Arise and shine.
Hallelujah, hallelujah. Amen. Katthar, inreki, chida, oru, magathana, oru, kariyam.
The magnificent work the Lord done today is?
Ungal, ettena, ve, adhi, viswasi, kumudi.
How many could believe this?
Inreki, unme, lirunda, Sabathai, neekinadu, maatharam, ala.
It is, not only the Lord have removed your curses.
Katthar, onakku, kodukara, vaakutatham, unmoolamaai, maath.
The promise the Lord is giving you, is, the Lord is going to remove the curses through you to others.
Ipolda, yada, petukalinga.
Right now, receive the promise.
Re, Baniya, Ra, Baka, Thidai, Baka, Thidai, Baka, Thidai. Thidai, Thidai, ina, Sahaniya, Ra, Man. Amen. Rettipana, Nanmayi, Indre, Tharum, Yesuve, Alavillaa, Wallamai. Indre, Tharum, Yesuve, Rettipana, Nanmayi. Indre, Tharum, Yesuve, Alavillaa, Wallamai. Amen. Indre, Tharum, Yesuve, Rettipana. Inde, Tharum, Yesuve, Alavillaa, Wallamai. Inde, Tharum, Yesuve, Rettipana, Nanmayi. Inde, Tharum, Yesuve, Alavillaa, Wallamai. Inde, Tharum, Yesuve, Rettipana, Nanmayi. Inde, Tharum, Yesuve, Alavillaa, Wallamai. 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 Inde, Tharum, Yesuve. Amen, amen. Or, nimish. Enne, avit, enne, avit, than, Avila, rindu, kitta, urpaga.
If you leave me, I will keep feeling in spirit.
Ungal, anegha, vali, varal, kida, Anubhavika, mudi, lene, anak, bayankara, vadan, ya, urk.
And I was tormented, and many pervert, sisters could not enjoy this.
Anegha, sisters, chamanam, portu, uka, ndinga, tholangi, nga.
Many sisters, you were sat on your lap, and it was nothing.
Inne, kividhala, bharlana, ni, Saharavari, kividhala, vanga, mada.
If you do not get deliverance today, until your death, you will not get deliverance.
In, idu, vandu, Devan, kodukara, time.
And this is the time given by the Lord.
Ne, Devan, onakke, onk, kudumbathu, oru, vimochna, kodukumbo, vaangi, kella, na, avur, pona, pora, ni, katti, katti, Saharavari, katti, brajnagada.
If the Lord is giving a deliverance to your family, till, if you're dead, then you could not get the deliverance.
Onak, ebbri, Sabathavachit, maunama, uka, nde, thalaya, kavra, mudi.
How can you remain silent by bowing your heads down with keeping your curses?
Apa, ni, oru, porupatta, tha, oru, porupatta, tagapana.
You are irresponsible father, irresponsible mother.
Elia, Elisa, ta, oru, kellvi, kattan.
Elija, ask a question to Elisa.
Enne, vidadama, pitisikittu, varriye, onak, enna, than, venu.
You hold me and follow after me, and what do you want?
Avan, jona, na, vidadama, pinbuthu, thabiku, oray, oru, reason, da.
A, buzz, you, 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 and holding you as only one reason.
Enna, reason?
What is the reason?
Na, inime, ninga, pona, bindu, na, katthar, kaha, nikinunna, enak, rettipana, varan, tha.
After you depart, if you want to stand for the Lord, I need a double full blessings.
And, avur, chulugara, rettipana, Nanmayi, inreki, taruva.
The Lord is saying that I will give you double full goodness and blessings to you.
Ettena, ve, venu.
How many are in need of this?
Ettena, ve, venu.
And how many want this blessings?
Ipolda, yada, petuk. Rettipana, Nanmayi.
A, double full goodness.
Alavillaa, Wallamai.
Immeasurable graces.
Amen. Amen, amen. Katthar, de, samothu, ka, isthotramanuva? In the, mona, vudus, utiripoodu, de, katthar, porupadu, padina, listhotramanuva? Kala, kalangala, i, namakulli, poradi, kundrunthu, Sabathin, Wallamagali, tagar, teri, mudi, a, Aviyana, oru, yarangina, arka, isthotramanuva? May, Agave, yella, kudumbangala, rukkara, Sabathin, pora, tangali, in the, sutiripu, kuttangal, o, du, muttilama, ulithu, poru, mudi, a, isthotramanuva? Thodarku, tangali, Deva Aviyana, oru, porupadukum, mudi, a, isthotramanuva? Mulu, sabayi, um, parisutha, sarathu, keta, sutangatukul, vali, nathu, mudi, a, isthotramanuva? Ella, magimia, oru, kese, alati, isthotramanuva? Ya. Jaam.
Engal neesikirajmiyana leesve, naasriki padadaanu nalamaale velakyaake, naagalu mitthudikiro. Vida pathathil kettizidu mudiyagavu, engal sudhirithul mudiyagavu, engal thalchumudiyagavu, haasriki padadaanu nalile neeruthanthapadina, alu mitthudikiro. Deva samuthil vanduka thave, vida vasana thiruvellichil thale, engal thalchumudiyage, neeralu kodichu tharakatha, guy stotram. Engadu jivithal kodigundukadu thane, ellapu laathu subhaavungal, vida vasana thirumurumaga, engal unarthena daivaka, naagalu mitthudikiramadire. Oru kaalithal engal saavathila irundhavanduvaru, neerangal mealkumudiyaga, marathre thukupattu, anda saavathai etukundu, the very rich rich people kathandrikiriyadire. Appudi padadaanu, veda pilligalindha daalugalay, andire, mukasstotram, saavathukulli, aadu padina, naalugal, ellapu laathu valavina muttilamaga, virdilakku padumudiyage. Veda pillal kodichu mudiyam, veda karthi naagalu appadikiro, sahodhana bikeedhunakathu, kule pathagana, andire. Anda saavathinam, veda jannalakku virdilakku mudiyam, veda karthi lappadikiro, tagappan nirguana thirukathu, uradu padikke, saavathika laaita raamdikke. Andire, anda polathu valavina, veda pilligal virdilakku padto, uggira koavathina saavathina virdilakku padittu, andire. Kattharka priyamilaatay, laakharidu, veda pilligal virdilakku padumudiyaa, saavathina virdilakku padumudiyaa, udavichu, pooru veela kurimataa adu padikke, andire. Ulakathina karigal, adiyappattu, bogaadu padikke, andire, anya panathina, gada gada kaadu padikke, ellapu laathu subhaavudin, naalugal, muttilamaga, virdilakku padumudiyage. Veda pillal kodichu, andire, ulakathina, aadu parathila, muttilamaga, virdilakku mudiyagavu, jevikiro, andire, mukasstotram, katthara ugyitha, asadhi aachi, aadu padikke. Chagamai chidu, vada haasvathapetrala, thagadu, lai, machumudiyage, vada karthi naagalu appadikiro, andire, kattharakka, kani kodukundu, laage, engal, engal jannalakku, machumudiyagavu, vada karthi lappadikiro. Vasana kethadaanu, naagalu, engal jannalakku, yella saavathina muttilamaga, virdilakku padte, vada raavaana haasvathapetrala, thagadu, laage, uru nu machumudiyaa, jevikiro. Mediaanu koota thelaani porupadukku, oru perdaana haasvathamaga, jayamaga, na vachathara kadesi, engalakku, engal jannathukal, aadu vaanakriyadu, thadupitte, vada varigin thabbi kinaale, vada uru nerappum, thalchim, vada karthi lappadikiro, porupadithu, laam. Esu naamthikal kravita.
Na tumave katthari stotri, ennu mulu nodhe parshudinama thistotri, na tumave katthari stotri. Aside sagalabhaanu, maravu. Amen. Hallelujah. Amen. Stotri.